Good evening, everyone. It is 6 o'clock PM and I would like to call this regular Board Meeting of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body?
Here.
Pick the rolls?
Here.
Ms. Hodgson? Here.
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 Mrs. Lawrence?
Here.
Ms. Lilji?
Here.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mrs. Willis?
She's here. Mrs. Willis, turn off the camera and pay attention to your baby. We got you. Any... Thank you very much. Any additions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will start with public comment. I do believe that I see Mr. Elmgren. I'm going to allow you to talk and we will start with you. Sir, go ahead when you are ready. We can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon. Am I able to be heard?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate you all taking the time to hear me this evening. I am coming to you for the second time this school year in regards to instructional time deficiencies at my daughter's elementary school at Mount Hope. I did speak to the board back in December after having spoken with Mr. Freeze, the principal at Mount Hope Elementary. And at that time, I spoke about concerns with an asynchronous Wednesday schedule for our elementary school students. And I followed up with Mr. Freeze as well as Superintendent Sinicropi, and I apologize if I butchered your last name, sir. An email back on February 8th and Mr. Freeze was responsive to that email. I outlined some continuing concerns that I have in regards to the lack of instructional time. Three brief points. First, the in-person or hybrid learning opportunities continue to remain unavailable for my student. I know that the district did send communication at the beginning of the year in regards to a return to in-person instruction. Less than 24 hours after receiving that email and being asked to complete a survey about our preference to have our daughter return to in-person instruction, the teacher sent an email to let us know that she would not be returning. So that leaves parents really between a rock and a hard place. I can make a decision about whether I want to continue this virtual learning model that is not working for my daughter or for our household, or I can entirely disrupt her educational experience this year by having her change instructors, curricula, and classmates with just a few weeks left. That's number one. Number two, the instructional time that is there is not being fully utilized in our elementary school classroom with the teacher frequently giving 15-minute breaks in an already very truncated school day. Throughout the day, starting class late and leaving class early, these kids are not getting instructional time with their teacher. And lastly, and I understand that there's a shortage statewide and nationally, but these asynchronous pre-recorded lessons have basically entirely replaced substitute teachers. So even though the kids are only going to school for half a day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, four days a week, despite that, when a teacher is not available, they're just recording lessons and putting some PowerPoint slides on Google Classroom. In the last two weeks between February 8th and February 19th, out of those 10 instructional days, my daughter has had face-to-face instruction for five of them. It's the equivalent of an entire week's worth of school being off. So I have continued concerns about my daughter's academic progress and future. I have concerns about the rigor of the virtual curriculum. And I think that it's obvious to everybody that has a student that is an elementary-
Mr. Elmgren, I'm going to have to stop you. That's your three minutes. The board thanks you for your comment this evening.
Thanks.
I do recognize that we have another submission for public comment. Ms. Shirley Cole. I don't believe that I see that person in attendance. Ms. Hester, please correct me if you see something different.
I don't see your name on the list, no.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to remind everyone, I know I've said this in a couple of board meetings in the past, that using the chat feature is not a way that we will recognize questions or comments from members of the public. If someone would like to make a public comment, you do have to submit that request on the district's website before the meeting starts. So please don't put questions of substance in the chat. That's not how the board or the administration will be recognizing questions from attendees this evening. Moving on to presentations, we will start with our nurses' presentation. Sam, I imagine that you are going to make some opening comments, so please go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, this is our monthly meeting of our COVID coordination team, which is led by our school nurses. And tonight, we have Sue Wheeler and Tammy Treat. I'll let you guys take it away. Thank you for being here.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you so much. Tammy's going to put up our PowerPoint.
Can you see it, Sue?
I cannot.
Okay. Hold on. My tech skills on display here. How about now?
Yes.
All right.
So we are happy to be here tonight to bring you an update on the COVID metrics. The good news is that each of the metric data points show a downward trend, reducing our risk levels from the highest to a moderate level of risk. And we draw special attention to the cases per 100,000 and the positivity rates. Even more encouraging, this data that you see represented here is from February 5th. And as of today, the cases per 100,000 have fallen to 15.6 and the positivity rate is down to 5.1. And that's for Ingham County is down to 5.1. The state of Michigan is even a bit lower. Although we're still in the moderate risk level, we are optimistic that these improving metrics will support the developing return to in-person learning plans. As you probably know, the CDC released updated guidelines for safe return, which were largely unchanged, but did have a renewed focus on the new cases per 100,000 and the positivity rate as especially important metrics to guide the decisions to return. So we will continue to closely monitor these metrics as we're developing the comprehensive return plan, which will also include significant and consistent mitigation strategies, testing and tracing, vaccines for staff choosing to be vaccinated, and district-wide attention to air quality and cleaning. My colleague Tammy will now turn our attention to another important health update for the month.
Good evening. Did you know that February is Heart Health Month? Sudden cardiac arrest is the third leading cause of death in the U.S. And about 250 Michigan children and young adults die from cardiac arrest each year. Only 10% of people survive sudden cardiac arrest. But that survival jumps to 50% when CPR and AEDs are used. So it's a very significant jump. And that's part of the good news in our district. The Lansing School District has AEDs throughout the district. And in fact, 14 new AEDs were delivered to the district today to be distributed throughout. And that number, hopefully, we will have an AED in every district building. And every school has a medical emergency response team, which helps respond to emergencies within the school. Our tip of the month is this cute little infographic, "Life Simple Seven" for kids. And I think some of these can be also for adults. Avoid smoking and using tobacco products. Be physically active every day. Eat a heart-healthy diet. Keep a healthy weight. Keep your blood pressure healthy. Keep your total cholesterol healthy. And keep your blood sugar healthy. Now, all of these are not always easy to attain, but they're really good goals for us to strive for in order to keep our cardiac health in good shape. Thank you.
Hey.
And I can-
Thank you very much, Sue and Tammy. We appreciate the time you put in and we appreciate all your advice. And I can say those seven cardiac arrest things, just so you know, it's been 18 years ago I had a heart attack. And I'm still around because I mostly take care of myself. I look at some of those seven things. I got some work to do on some of them. We probably all do. But thank you for bringing that to our attention tonight and thank you for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the information about the seven good habits. My question, and maybe not for you, but for the whole district, it may not necessarily be the answer that's had to be today, but how we are going to improve physical education on health classes? Especially when we are not having the kids outside or walking or doing anything. And I am a visitor. I am a contributor of our visitor. And I think that you have a plan about physical education from kindergarten to 12th grade and how we exercise that in elementary and middle, no, middle school, but six to eight and then seven to 12 in the other ones. And I think that is a very, besides these seven good habits, I think the physical education and health classes need to come back on Sunday to see how offer the best for our students.
To Dr. Rodriguez.
If the answer is not today, I will continue asking to present a plan for physical education in the Lansing School District.
President Lawrence, we will follow up on that and-
Okay.
-come back to you at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions from board members? Everybody go call your doctor and get your cholesterol checked. Thank you, nurses. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next presentation, that is the Safe Learning Plan presentation. We are all waiting with bated breath. Sam, take it away.
I will not keep us long. We came on February 4th and there was comments from the board and we knew we had a little more work to do, so we've done that work. We have a plan that we hope would be approved by the board tonight. So I do want to say one thing, is that the one thing I like best about this plan is that we've had our teachers' association and our administrators group involved, their leadership involved in the planning of this. So we spent some time this week with them as we went through the PowerPoint. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chapman. And this is probably the longest PowerPoint in my tenure that we've done tonight, but there's a lot of things to cover. I want to thank executive team, instructional division, and lots of people who were involved in this. So take it away, Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. Good evening, Board of Education and Lansing School District family. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Thank you. So as Superintendent Sinicropi shared, we are elated this evening to provide the updates and the expansion to the plan that we brought before you two weeks ago on February the 4th. I also would like to thank our leaders of our bargaining units for our administrator and educator units, LASSA and LSCA respectively. We really appreciate the collaboration and the effort by all that have been put into this plan. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm having a problem with it. Technology is just not being my friend today. It worked before. So Lynette, I'm going to stop sharing and just ask that you share the PowerPoint for me, please. Thank you.
You're muted, Lynette.
Are you able to locate it, Lynette?
I do have it. Let me try once again.
Okay, thank you.
It's not showing up. Would you like for me to share it?
Sure, Cordelia. That would be great. Thank you so much.
Not a problem.
I swear to everyone, it was working five minutes ago.
It really was.
We tested it and everything, so I apologize.
All righty, Dr. Chapman, you're all set.
Thank you so much. Moving ahead, if you can advance it to the next slide, please. Thank you. So once again, the overview tonight will include the following points, and we have four of them. The staff and family communication, metrics and data analysis, the instructional model and schedules, and very important, the safe learning protocols and logistics of the plan. Next slide. So starting off with staff and family communication. After our February 4th meeting, we went back and we took a very, very close look at how we communicated to our staff and to our families. We did discuss on February 4th the commitment letter that was distributed via email to all staff and all families, the purpose being detailing the specific need for a response in order for us to adequately plan for a return to our school campuses. We launched the commitment form on January the 13th. And because we were questioning the timeframe and felt that we needed to give families more time, it actually was extended as of January 20th to January 27th. So the commitment form itself was open after launching for a total period of 14 days. Next slide. Along with the commitment and ask for the return and what would be the preference of staff and for families, as an executive team and under the leadership of Superintendent Sinicropi, we wanted to highlight in the commitment letter where we are as a district during the current pandemic, what we are doing, and definitely where we are going. Some of those highlights included, we wanted to remind our stakeholders and our partners, namely our staff and families, that we still must follow the metrics and how that affects our region and more specifically, Ingham County and the Lansing metro area. We also wanted to remind our stakeholders of the success that we've had thus far, being the first district in the state of Michigan to fully go 100% with remote learning through our Lansing School District reimagined plan last fall. What we are doing, we are continuing to provide high-level interaction and communication and support to students in our learning labs in a very safe and nurturing environment. We also are offering pandemic tutoring services to support our learners as well as servicing our special population students, which would be those with IEPs and 504s as aligned to their contingency learning plans. And one highlight, which was shown this evening through our nurses' presentation, we are very excited about the coordination and the establishment of our COVID coordination team that has helped us from a scientific and medical lens as we continue to move through the pandemic. Next slide. And finally, where are we going? We had the extension of remote learning through the end of first semester and that's our learning mode still yet as of today. And we are proud to say that we have consistently been following CDC guidelines as aligned with local health department and CDC guidelines. We have been very consistent the last several weeks in providing vaccination availability to both our operational and instructional staff, as well as we have already, because we now have data through the end of the first semester with grade reporting, we have identified and began planning with an extensive summer program to support the learning loss and the deficiency relative to the pandemic. The final highlight of the letter was the intentional data that we intended to capture, which basically we asked the question to staff and to families if it would be their preference to commit to hybrid instruction, which is a combination of remote and onsite learning, or to remain 100% remote through the end of the school year. And we also wanted to address any needs of families that would require transportation. So we shared with you what we communicated, but we also wanted to make sure that you were very clear on how. So we connected with our Director of Communications, Mr. John McGraw. He, along with his staff, were able to put this very detailed graphic together, which very specifically shows how we communicated. Using our in-touch technology system, which actually is not just a robo-call by phone, but it actually puts out messaging in various ways, including the phone call, text messaging, as well as email. Based on the data presented, you can see that we were very methodical in our approach and wanted to have continuous communication on the commitment letter to our stakeholders, specifically our families. The robo-call dates include January 14th, 17th, and 24th. The times of communication are provided along with the various formats. One may ask, what does the information designated as being not delivered mean? It shows in parentheses that those would be families that have opted out. That does not mean that they did not receive the information. That means that if they received it via text message, when the phone call came through or the email came through, they may have not opened the email and they may have declined to accept the phone call. The information also shares with you the number of hangups. And once again, hangups does not mean that the family member did not receive the information. They may have received it in a different format. At any rate, we are happy to note on the first day of execution of communication, there were over 30,000 messages delivered. And those numbers, although they were lower the next two cycles, the number of messages that were delivered on that first day is a clear indication that the reach out was met and we put in an earnest effort to communicate this information. Some may be asking, well, what did you do in regards to the website? The family commitment letter, which embedded the actual link to the commitment form, was posted on our district website main page, our district news feed, as well as each homepage of each of our schools. Next slide. Moving into metrics and data analysis. So from our efforts of reaching out, we were able to put together metrics and data specific to our decision that led up to the plan that will be unveiled momentarily. When we take a very close look at metrics, and these metrics were just presented by our nursing staff, yes, you can see that we are moving downward from being in a very high-risk level to a moderate risk level. The data that was presented by our nursing staff was specific to February the 5th. The next slide shows data that is specific to one week later, February the 12th, which is continuing to show the downward trend as it relates to risk levels. Next slide. On February the 4th, we did present to the Board of Education the outbreak data that was surfacing the third, leading into the fourth week of January. The outbreaks across Michigan had five top settings. And the second top setting was K-12 schools. We reported that 1/3 of the new COVID-19 outbreaks in those K-12 settings were found in Region 1, which includes Ingham County, the county associated with the Lansing School District. So what is an outbreak? And we did define this in our previous presentation, but we want to reiterate that a COVID-19 outbreak is basically two or more laboratory-confirmed COVID-19 cases among students or staff with onsets within or over a 14-day period. And they include the following factors. Epidemiologically linked. The individuals do not share a household. They are not identified as close contacts of each other in another setting during standard case investigation or contact tracing. And so, answering to the call of the board, there was one question posed. The metrics that we have been providing is specific to our region, but what does the data look like specifically for the city of Lansing or the Lansing metro area? After careful review and research, we were able to locate and to validate the Lansing metro area overall COVID risk. And at that time, in the date of this data shows, it's showing is for February the 10th, we were still overall classified as high as it relates to daily new cases per 100,000. The infection rate, however, was at a .87 and considered to be low. And the positive test rate was medium. So it would fall into that moderate range that Nurse Wheeler shared with us on this evening. And a highlight of this data is that as of February the 10th, the vaccination rate, meaning the first shot series, 9.6% of the Lansing metro area had been vaccinated. Next slide. And now, on to the metrics and data analysis from our staff and from our families. This data was shared on February the 4th. After careful review, we actually extended the presentation of the data. So not only the percentage breakdown of the total 938 responses, but we also identified the exact numbers. So 275 of 938 responders chose or elect hybrid instruction. The remaining 71% of our staff would like to or are selecting to remain 100% remote for the remainder of this school year. Please keep in mind that this specific total data of 938 responses represents all bargaining units of those that responded. When we take an even closer look and we break down that data listed for you, here are all of the bargaining units associated with the Lansing School District. You see the breakdown of hybrid versus remote or screen-to-screen instruction. You see the breakdown of hybrid versus remote or screen-to-screen instruction. Next slide. And now, moving into our classroom teacher data. Very important slide here. For general education classroom teacher responses, we had a total of three hundred and ninety to respond. Of those three hundred and ninety, seventy-nine at a rate of twenty percent are willing to. Teach or provide instruction in a hybrid model. Eighty percent of those responding that are general education classroom teachers. Prefer to remain remote. If we look to the right of the screen, the responses by grade level are very specific. To those that selected hybrid. So, in planning to return, we had to take a very close look at the range of staff. That have responded to return in a hybrid mode, ranging from one. At the seventh grade level to a span of twenty-one teachers across our three high schools. So each of those roles represent the grade level and the total number of teachers. That are classroom teachers and are electing to return in hybrid across the district. Next slide. And so now, taking a very close look at special education staff commitment. You'll notice to the left on the screen, we have the bargaining units. That that represents, and so this would be um individuals working in the schools. Um L A E S would be support staff and very specific our secretarial staff. LASSA representing our. That would be representing our administrators, our L E A assistants, and our L S C A educators. To the right of the screen, you will see the responses for hybrid selection. Specific to the various job responsibilities that our special education staff hold. And finally, moving on to the metrics and data analysis for our family commitment. We expanded the data to show. The number of families that chose hybrid instruction, which is eh a total of two thousand six hundred and eighty-six. For twenty-six percent. Remote learning, eighteen percent at one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. And then we also included for this visual presentation of the data, there were. Five thousand six hundred and sixty or fifty-six percent of our families that had no response. In the commit family commitment letter and the family commitment form. It was clearly explore expressed that families electing not to submit. A formal commitment, then they, the communication is to us. That they are selecting by their no response to remain one hundred percent remote. For the remainder of the school year. Our special populations, we needed to take an extremely close look at in what they are electing. And so this particular data um actually pulls a piece of the pie out, if you will, so that we can share. The choices for students with I E Ps, our English learner students with I E Ps. And our English learner students alone. We would like to highlight that this is a total of two thousand six hundred and eighty-six. Or it is within that total, and of that total, these students that did respond. For the hybrid selection are a part of the over two thousand families that were contacted. By Mr. Sergio Keck and his staff, the bilingual assistants. And I would like to personally thank that staff for doing that for us. That was, that um was very eye-opening. And we are glad that we had the opportunity to do that direct reach out for that special population. Next slide. And now, pulling all of the data together, the family commitment by grade configuration. As we look across the grade spans pre-K three. Our academies, which includes pre-K five, pre-K eight, six, eight, and pre-K six. Along with our four-six or middle years sites and our seven, seven-twelve high schools. You will notice that there is definitely consistency as it relates to the choice for hybrid. Versus remote and no response. Next slide. And we do apologize but deemed it necessary to show this data. This data is the family commitment by school and by grade level. We noticed that the, the grand total for each school has a variance. It spans for, from I believe as low as twenty-one to over or to nearly. Four hundred students at one particular school site. The total number of students in the Lansing School District that have elected or chosen. The hybrid model totals two thousand six hundred and eighty-six. And now, moving on to instructional models and schedules. Based on the data that we have received and now we have reviewed. I would like to emphasize that the instructional model and schedule that's being presented. Specific to the hybrid model and the hybrid plan. Is specific to those students and their families that have chosen the hybrid option. Next slide. So our safe learning plan unveiled and modified. For grades pre-K through twelve, screen-to-screen learning with SOAR. SOAR standing for Student Opportunities for Academic Re-engagement. Through this hybrid model, Lansing School District students would attend. Would continue, I'm sorry, with screen-to-screen instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday, all day is a day. And that day in particular, through this hybrid selection. Because we will have students coming in to schools will serve as our deep clean day as well. The P M on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday would be. Our SOAR days in the afternoon only. Schedules for P M will be customized by school and or grade level configuration. For students and families that are electing to stay screen-to-screen. You will continue to follow even through the hybrid selection, the screen-to-screen. Synchronous learning will, those schedules will not change, they will remain the same. Next slide. So one may ask, why SOAR? Why SOAR? Student Opportunities for Academic Re-engagement. The points that follow definitely validate. Through the collaboration of the executive team along with LASSA and L S C A leadership. We definitely want to maintain student-teacher relationships. We wanted to make sure that there is no further disruption. And no change because our students have and our staff have encountered quite a bit of change over the last thirteen to fourteen months. So with this model, with students remaining screen-to-screen in the A M. For those that selected hybrid, there will be no teacher changes. All of the learning in the A M will still take place through remote screen-to-screen instruction. Secondly, through SOAR, we can ensure academic continuity. If we were based on the staff availability of those returning and the number of students to service in the hybrid model. If we were to consider a different hybrid model. We would not be able to ensure academic continuity as it relates. Keeping students with their same teacher and having them to learn at the current and same pace as they have. From the beginning of school up to this point. And finally, through SOAR, we are guaranteeing that we will be able to provide diverse. Opportunities to support the whole child. There's been a lot of research in addition to the change, there's been a lot of research over the last year. And through that research, we know that one primary concern of parents and students themselves. Is socialization or the lack thereof. Through SOAR, we would definitely be able to. Answer that and provide support with socialization for our students. S E L or social emotional learning would be embedded in those activities and opportunities. We also would be able to provide academic enrichment and intervention. As we have came to the close of first semester and now, moving very swiftly through second semester. We've identified students that need to be challenged a little more and we would provide that through academic enrichment. And we also noticed due to academic or learning loss caused by the pandemic. We have to be intentional with our interventions. And finally, through our learning pathways or career pathways. Our theme schools and very specifically our magnet schools along with the community partnerships that we utilize. Such as Ebersol, Fenner, and so many others. Through our SOAR, we would be able to provide authentic and explorer turning exploratory learning. Through P B L and other means of learning, our students would be able to thrive and be back in settings. That they are used to and accustomed to as being provided by the Lansing School District. So, we come back and we are excited about being able to provide the SOAR opportunity. But it's still all about safety. So safe learning protocols and logistics would be our next section in the presentation. And we're gonna start out with some very specific updates. So before bringing students back in, we have to make sure that we have all the materials, equipment, and supplies. And we are definitely on track with that. To the left on the screen, we're sharing this evening. The supplies that we have in stock and to the right, the supplies on order. During the in informational study session on last week um with the Board of Education. Mr. Mark Harsley of Sadekso um presented to us and shared with us. The air purification systems and units that we will be um putting into all of our, our buildings. And so in addition to the items that you see listed on the screen, we are also technologically ready. To fight against and to protect um according to guidelines um through technological machinery. And equipment. Next slide. So we get, we, we know what we want to do and we have the materials to do so. But it's important to make sure that students that need help in getting to our hybrid model can do so. So, transportation, we still must have a protocol. The following um steps or guidelines share very specifically. The outcome of partnering with Dean Transportation and the protocols that are being, that will be put in place. Upon return. Students' temperature will be taken at home. Prior to arriving to the bus stop or if self-transporting to the school. All students are expected to wear a mask. Now, we have had questions regarding um different medical conditions. And um Sue Willer along with Ms. Black, they have packaged information that will be going out um to families. Um so that everyone understands the very necessity of wearing the mask, but if there is a specific situation. Health-related situation that needs to be considered and reviewed, we do have our COVID coordination team in place. Willing and ready and available to respond to that. All students will sanitize hands upon boarding the bus and prior to being seated. All buses will have assigned seating for contact tracing. Students as they board the bus will be seated rear to front. Students, students will exit the bus front to rear. Siblings will be seated together. Per the seating chart. And finally, in partnership with Dean Transportation, um Dean Transportation, they. They service across our region, across the state. And so they too have aligned with the state of Michigan My Safe Start Plan. And all of their protocols are provided in a detailed booklet and this is the. The publication along with collaboration with face-to-face meeting that we have utilized to put together. Our transportation protocol. Superintendent Sinakopri did inform the executive team um that Mr. Kelly Dean himself will be coming in. Um and we will further take a very deep look at the, the protocol and if there are any um expansions that will be needed. Next slide. So arrival, we've bussed in or we've walked in or we've been dropped off and so when we arrive. It is important to know that students may not arrive prior to the start of their SOAR time. Remember, SOAR only takes place in the afternoon and only for the students who have selected. The hybrid model. Parents and visitors will not be allowed into schools for any reason. Students will not be allowed to line up or linger outside the school. Students will arrive wearing a mask and enter through their assigned entrance. If a student arrives without wearing a mask, as you could see on our supply list. We are well-equipped and will provide the mask. Students will proceed directly to their assigned space upon entry as led by assigned staff. Staff will be present to support students as they move to their assigned space. At the end of the SOAR day, students will be dismissed in cohorts with bus riders dismissed first. All other students will be released in cohorts that remain in the classroom. We will continue to uh promote nutritional support. Because we are only convening in the afternoon. Food distribution will not be through the school sites. It will continue through our food distribu- distribution sites. So, none of that will change. Families are strongly encouraged to still go to. The food sites for your breakfast and your lunch pickup. If you have questions, please reach out to your school or reach out to Sadekso Magic. And that information I know is probably small here on the screen, but it is available at our website. So what will be the SOAR classroom layout? There are some very specific logistics. We want, once again, it's all about safety. Classroom furniture, including desks and learning stations will support learners being six feet apart. Desk and tables will face the same direction. Transparent foldable desk shields, which we have onsite in the district, will be provided for each student. All of the previous information stated in terms of classroom layout and other mitigation strategies. Are now embedded in the official Lansing School District SOAR Risk Mitigation Protocol. Within the protocol, we have several different sections and those sections are specific to. Mitigation strategies that are preparatory, so we're providing guidance to families and to staff. How to prepare for the return. Personal mitigation strategies. How should you be um providing self-care? How should you be washing, sanitizing hands? What type? What type of mask and how to wear the mask? How should you be moving about or participating in the classroom? School building strategies in terms of moving from one space to the other. Along with strategies for special activities. Additionally, for SOAR, we have created student health and safety expectations. And intervention protocol. Within this protocol, we specify or highlight the health screener agreement. That will need to be signed off on and agreed upon with the family, between the family and the school. We will have posted throughout our school sites or our SOAR sites signage that focus on. Face masks, hand washing, and social distancing. These visuals will also be embedded in the communication that is provided to our families and our staff. Continuing on with expectations and intervention. We were asked very specifically at the February fourth board meeting, how will we intervene? How will we address students that may struggle with being on-site? We are a district that believes firmly in positive reinforcement. So through culturally responsive, positive behavior intervention supports. All of our students will receive tiered intervention modeled expectations. They will be introduced or we will continue and remind our students through relationship building. Along with social, emotional, and mental health support. This protocol as well will be provided to all staff and all families that have elected. Or chosen the hybrid model. And how will they receive communication and training? For families, there will be a series of communication made available seven to ten days prior to our opening for SOAR. As you see here on the left, through PCAC, Parent University, our district website. Definitely through school, through social media and school notification. Families that have elected or chosen hybrid will be well informed. And to the right, there is a definite list of opportunities for staff, including administrators. Instructional and support staff to receive training to be well equipped and prepared as we. Prepare for our return of our through our hybrid model. And so now, we come to the end of our presentation. And based on the metrics and data analysis presented, the instructional models. And definitely our safety protocols and logistics, the executive team recommends the following. That the safe learning plan be adopted. And that the safe learning plan be phased in by grade band. With a target start date of March twenty-second, depending on the metrics of this region. I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to all that worked on the creation of the plan. And a very special thank you to, once again, the leaders of our administrative bargaining unit and our educator unit. For working with the executive team to put together what we believe is the most viable plan for return at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. I'll turn it back over to you, Mrs. Lawrence.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. That that is incredible. Thank you so much and thanks for all of this information. It feels like you were kind of reading all of our minds. And anticipating a lot of the questions that we are gonna ask. So I'm gonna start with Rachel and then I'll go to Nathan, Missy, and Guillermo. Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you, and I sincerely appreciate all of the feedback that you guys all took from our last presentation incorporated into this one. My initial question is related to just really quick a process question. Kids will be taking their temperatures at home. How are we gonna make sure that's enforced and will we have a process to ensure that families have. Appropriate thermometers and then concerned about, you know, our kids come from all types of situations, including homelessness. So how are we gonna make sure we're supporting families with that?
Sure, I will answer and then also defer to Nurse Willer. So Ms. Willis, we are asking that the temperature be taken before they arrive at the bus stop. And before arriving at the school site. But we also will be taking temperatures as a second check upon arrival. That's embedded into that as well. In terms of the actual protocol of how to take the temperature. We are, in terms of the the validation of that at the home or at the at the site where the child will be before arriving. I will defer to Ms. Willer on that.
Thank you. Well, the CDC definitely recommends that they do home screening first. And you know, for a couple of reasons. One is when they arrive at school, you can end up with a backlog. A group of children that are waiting to be screened. And we create the exact situation that we're trying to avoid, which is having, you know, groups of kids together. For families that don't have the resource, we would hope that, you know, we would connect with them. And find community service, the district provision of the thermometers and work with families on. How to take the child's temperature and be sure they have the equipment they need.
Let me let me jump, let me jump in and just add one thing too is that. We probably would be able to provide a certain number of them through some the CARES funding that we're receiving. We just have to make sure that we allocate it. So we possibly could do that for families that may need it.
Sure, and thankfully we're for, well, not thankfully, but we're in a position where hopefully that's not a supply issue. Beginning of the pandemic, literally getting our hands on touch of thermometers challenge. And then follow-up questions that are we going to be doing any additional screening questions for other symptoms? Because fever may not be the only, especially for older kids like lost the taste of smell. That suddenly onset any of those sort of things that we're tracking those. And then same protocol for staff that will be in the dorm room, will they also be doing those screens?
The COVID coordination team has actually created a health screener for students and staff. And it includes not only the temperature but other symptoms that they may have had if they've had an exposure to a COVID-positive person. Or if they have someone in their home who is COVID-positive. And those would be questions that they would screen for and answer each day before coming to school.
Thanks. So it'll be similar. We'll follow the protocol that's also required by the Health Department for workplace safety and all those sort of things. Okay, great. Thank you. My next question is related to also, this is a can of sparkling water. I'm not giving my child soda. I just felt like I needed to clarify that. And it's empty. Sorry. Regarding the students who may continue to choose to be remote. Are we going to still be able to offer them any type of co-curricular participation? Can they still participate in sports? What will their social, emotional learning opportunities look like?
Well, I I can handle that one. They can participate. Anybody that's a student in the school district, whether remote or in-person or hybrid. Can take part in extracurricular activities. So that's not necessarily an issue. Did you have, was there other question with that, right, Mrs. Lewis or Mrs. Willis? Excuse me.
Uh, no, that answered my question. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to Nathan.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for all of the data, so many charts and graphs. It was awesome. I loved reading it. That's not satire. I do like looking at tables. So I have two fairly specific questions. One is relates to the hybrid model that we're using. Minimizing contact amongst students from different classrooms is a fairly straightforward matter. When you're dealing with whole classroom instruction in lower grades. I'm curious what the strategy is going to be for minimizing contacts across groups of students. When you're looking at middle and high school classrooms where they're changing classrooms.
The I I'll start and then Dr. Chapman, go ahead. I I don't, we are not, we are not encouraging students changing classrooms. We encourage students to be in cohorts. So, but once again, part of that will be what the in high school and middle school age years. What what they just, what each school decides to do, but that's part of, part of the responsibility and part of the mitigation stuff that. The risk mitigation, things that parents will be provided with. But go ahead, Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinakopri, and thank you for the question, Dr. Burrows. So, the, in terms of logistics and format, especially in the upper grades. We are looking at not having necessarily students move. But if they move from one space to another for an activity, they will always be moving as a cohort. We also are definitely looking at the scenario as we work with our middle grades and our high school sites. Where the cohort stays intact. But the teacher or facilitator or activity leader comes where the cohort is. Rather than moving the entire cohort. So that's, that is the model that we're looking at having in place.
That makes me very happy. That was the word I was looking for, but I was trying not to get too technical with it. So, thank you. The other one, other question I have is relates to transportation. So it said that we were gonna be having assigned seats with siblings seated next to each other. Will there be situations in which unrelated persons will be seated next to each other? Or will we have seats that are designated entirely for one child?
Sam, you're muted.
I'm muted. That's not bad. That's one. It will depend a lot on the number of students on the on the on the vehicle. But also, one of the reasons we wanted to bring Kelly Dean in probably the first meeting in March. Just so to answer some of these questions specifically and what they deal with. They have a whole risk mitigation strategy as as. And protocols as Dr. Chapman showed us earlier tonight. So the answer is maybe, but I wanna, I would defer to him when he gets here.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a very thorough presentation. So, Delta, thank you again for all, all the hard work that your team did. Those are all my questions.
Dr. Rose, going on to Missy.
Thank you, Madam President, and Dr. Chapman, and Sam, and everybody. I I wanna give you a standing ovation, like I. This was an incredible, incredible presentation with an incredible level of detail and anticipation. So just echo my colleagues when I say I'm really, really impressed and really, really grateful for all the work that you've done. Now, I'm wondering if it'd be possible to share this presentation with everybody. And I'm thinking about the emails that I get every week from my, my kids' teachers or principal. Would it be possible for that type of communication to have a link to this presentation? Because it answers so many questions. It's so thorough. And I know that there's a lot of people who want all this information, but they don't always know the best way to find it. And I think we'd have a lot of smiling faces if we could get this to them, if we could anticipate how to get this to them. So that's just a request. Okay, I have three questions. The first one is, so extracurriculars are back in person now?
We have extracurricular activities going on right now.
Are there some that are not able to be in person? Like I'm thinking about, I know we're having sports, but I know there are some like indoor contact things or indoor singing things. That are kind of high-risk activities. Are are those things in person now?
Those are not in person right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Then. I went through this process. You took me on a journey, you know. I was at first thinking, oh, you know, can we change our minds based on, you know, like. We've heard about a teacher who doesn't wanna go back and a family that does wanna go back. And if there's a mismatch, can we change our mind if our teacher? We wanna go back and our teacher doesn't want to. And then you said something about that you figured out how to do it so that there wouldn't have to be any teacher changes. And and that's amazing. And I understand that the SOAR program is happening in the afternoons. And can you help me understand who is teaching that?
The SOAR, I'll let, no, I'll let Dr. Chapman do it.
Okay, so based on the staff commitment, Ms. Lilgie. Of the teachers that are interested or willing to be hybrid. And we do have even more, we we are, we know that we overloaded you all with data. We still, we have so much data. So, we actually know by grade level and name for each school. Who will be teaching or providing those services. So, the core content that they're receiving through screen-to-screen instruction, that is consistent. There is no changes there. For the student that's coming in for the SOAR program at their school. It may not be the exact same teacher that they are assigned to. However, it will still be very uniform in terms of by grade level across the district. But with some autonomy based on, for example, if it's at a magnet school. So, to answer your question, Ms. Lilgie, the SOAR instructors will be the instructors. By grade level who have elected to come and to provide hybrid instruction.
Okay, great. And if I didn't see that you had consulted with LSEA already. I would be asking about the load for those teachers, but I totally trust that Chuck is on that. And you all have good relationship working with that union, so I'm not worried about that. My final question is, could you tell us what what you do know a little bit more about? Before I finish that question, it's about summer program. I do wanna say that I did write down, can you give us a date range based on the current trends of the metrics about when you could? And then you had it, you you had it right in there, March twenty-second. So I wanna tell you that you answered that question before I even could ask it. Okay, my final question is about, could you talk a little bit more about summer, what you think, what you envisioned there?
Sure, if we can reflect back to last week with our presentation during the information study session. On the equip with six and very specifically to the RISE squared portion of that presentation. So when we think about summer, we have the data based on report card marking. For first semester, we know the students that literally. We're going to be giving a strong encouragement, but pretty much more like a requirement to participate in summer school. So it won't just be coming in to brick and mortar and, you know, sitting behind a desk. We will, as we always do, like with our summer explorers program. It will be invigorating and inviting, but it will definitely have a much more heavy, if you will, Ms. Lilgie. On content. So we're going to be looking at content standards and looking at learning loss. Because our students haven't been inside the school for a year. We couple that with the data that we have not only from report card markings. But also our internal assessments with NWEA and things of that nature to look at where students are. And then we create a program that's going to build their skill. So as we are moving into fall, they may not be fully at grade level, but we have set a foundation. And we will know through the summer program that even the extent to how we need to intervene. And provide enrichment as we move into the fall.
Okay, and just one follow-up question. You mentioned summer explorers and I just wonder. For students who were lucky enough to have the. were lucky enough to have the resources they need to stay at grade level, who might not be required to do summer school, but maybe they want to do summer explore, will summer explorers be an option?
So we're still sure. So we're still in the early planning stages of what summer will look like totally, Ms. Lilgie. But we have addressed, we have talked about that. Not all of our students are going to need that intervention, but as a district, we know how important summer is in terms of providing those opportunities. So we're already starting to look at how we can have that balance between enrichment and exploring in students that need the intervention. But I do want to emphasize the student that needs the intervention, we're still gonna make that fun, engaging, but also intervene and work on bringing their skills up so that they are ready for fall.
Okay. Uh, thank you again. Standing ovation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One, one, one quick, Ms. Lilgie. Starting, well, tomorrow, the, the entire board meeting is going to be on, will be on YouTube and our Facebook page. We also will separate out the PowerPoint. John McGraw just texted me and said he's got a way he can do it. So the PowerPoint will be available on our website and other places like that.
Okay, that's terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, you know, thank you for the great presentation, lots of information. And you know, a lot of work, I'm sure. So thank you very much to all the team. One, one question I have right now is clarification. When you say metro Lansing, you mean just metro Lansing School District? Or you mean metro Lansing including the, the surrounding districts?
Thanks for the question, Mr. Lopez. The data that we pulled was specific to what would be considered within the, the boundaries of the city of Lansing. And so that's as how specific as we could, could get it. Because we are a district of choice and we have students coming in from all over the county, we felt the need to pull data that would highlight and be very specific to the city of Lansing. And so that's as best as I can explain the data pool. Ms. Black or Ms. Willer, do you all have any additional specification on that data?
I agree, Del. So that's the city data represents the city itself, not the outlying areas.
Right.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Because I was thinking that if it was a metro area or, you know, would include Michigan State and, and all those districts who have had problems, you know, of sorts, you know, that, that was part of our, our data. So thank you for that clarification. The, the next question I have, it just refreshes my, my mind, my memory. But we were told that calls were made to non-English speaking parents. And I, if I recall well, the response was similar in, in nature, kind of. The percentage wise of those folks that wanted to have in-person learning and or hybrid and those that wanted to stay screen-to-screen. Is that correct? Am I remembering well?
You are remembering well, Mr. Lopez. I will also defer very specifically to Mr. Sergio Keck. He has those numbers and percentages memorized, Mr. Keck.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman.
Yes.
Be specific about the numbers. I'm going to defer also to Ms. Benavides because the role that I, that I play, the department that played was making the phone calls, making sure that everybody got a phone call and we had the right numbers. But I don't really recall the exact numbers of of how the, the results came out. Can you help out, Ms. Benavides?
I'm trying to think who I could defer to.
You can defer to me whenever you're done, if you want.
Okay, that sounds great. I know, I am, we made two hundred, 2,287 phone calls.
Yep.
Those were the EL phone calls that went. We received 341 yeses, meaning students that wanted to come back to hybrid instruction. And the no's are a little bit harder to decipher. And the reason I say that is because the bilingual assistants did an extraordinary job on collecting the data and they wrote narratives next to each one. And so it was very difficult for me then to know without reading the other 1,600 or so what, what the exact response was. So I'll give you a couple of examples. Some were, Dad is going to call me back tomorrow. You know, he's working nights. He's thinking, yes. I mean, they gave some very wonderful descriptions. So the, it's a little bit harder to decipher which ones were straight no's and which ones were people that had moved or that they were going to call back later, but maybe hadn't done so. So those are the two numbers that I am, I have very clear lines of, or the 341 were yeses that Sergio Keck and his team were able to connect with and and get responses from. But they were very, very diligent in calling all of the families and had very few that they were not able to reach in some capacity or others. Some were just leaving messages. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted to get a refresher on that because I think it's important to know that. And this may be for another day, but I want to pose the question either way. In terms of responses for staying in screen-to-screen or, or hybrid or in-person period, I'd like to know in terms of how it breaks out in terms of refugee classification, ethnicity, race, diverse families which shows that. Then the next question, we talked about teachers in the classroom. What about assistants? Are they going to play a role in terms of the SOAR model? Can you give me some sort of information on that?
Sure. So great questions, Mr. Lopez. And yes, we do have that data that you're requesting. We already have that broken down by ethnicity. So we, we'd be happy to get that for you. As far as instructional assistance with SOAR, we all, we actually have preliminarily talked about if, if there is a need to expand learning labs within the school sites, we would definitely have our LEA assistants available for that. But they also will have the opportunity to participate and assist with the SOAR program, yes.
Okay. And, and again, this, my last question right now is maybe for, for the next meeting response, but maybe you have something on that now. You know, I'm concerned of the, the no responses that chose to not, not respond. So we punch them with the fact that they're part of the 74% that wanted face-to-face, I mean, screen-to-screen. I'm worried about their achievement and how we're going to test or, or how we're going to determine at the end of the day, their achievement for this year and whether they go to the next grade or, or graduate. So that's something that, that I think I'd like to know how we're going to do that. And like I said, it might, might not be answered today. But I think we need to know and, and inform parents as to what we're doing to, you know, determine a student achievement this year.
We share your concern, Mr. Lopez. And I think you're right that we'll, we, we can bring that back in a few weeks when we have the data at our fingertips and what we can tell you then. But we share the same concern. We as the, as the executive team in the school district.
Thank you. And I know that parents share that concern too. Especially when we know that, and I don't know how many students, but I've, I've heard, you know, conversations where kids are not on, paying attention to what's going on. You know, there are other matters that I, I don't want to, you know, throw out right now because we're, that may be another conversation. But also the time that students are online, time teachers may not be online and those kinds of things and how that helps or hinders their achievement goals. So I'd like to have a conversation about that, maybe at the, at the next couple of meetings. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Lopez, I'm going to go on to Dr. Rodriguez and then Dr. Burrows and then Mrs. Willis.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to all of you for these plans and the presentation in these very exceptional times. We already know about the teacher, about the assistant, but how is it going to be the organization of the school? Is it going to be the principal there? Is it going to be the secretary there? How, how is going to, the school is going to be built? How kind of team is going to be there?
I'll start and it will be, it will not be a lot different than it is during the regular school year. There's going to be someone in charge, the principal. There's going to be office help. There's going to be teaching staff. There'll be assistance as Mr. Lopez asked. That's, it's not going to change, that part of it.
Well, that is security for the parents and to know that, you know, they, they need to know who's going to be in the buildings. These teachers, they are going to be going to the schools and doing their hybrid. They maybe are going to spend some money, personal money. And because they are sacrificing, they are doing that kind of the new different than the other ones. Are we going to compensate them for they spend money and here and there and materials that they had to use, any planning to compensate teachers?
I would, I would answer that this way. The, the, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is, is that we would want to do our, our purchasing very similar to what we would do if we were face-to-face. So they'll be able to purchase things through the purchasing cards and through their office. If, if teachers somehow have to spend money, their own money on some things, I think we probably can cover it. I'm certain we can cover it if that happens. But we would want them to do the normal procedures first.
First.
Thank, and I am talking just between the March 22nd until the end of the school year. And, and supposedly after two weeks, many other parents want to enroll kids in the hybrid. Can they do it?
We've actually talked, we've talked about that, you know? In fact, we used, we used two weeks as the, I think the, it's going to be, it's going to be a learning experience for all of us, how we get started and how it looks and how each place, each school building progresses as we go through this. I think that it depends, there's lots of factors. I'm not, can't promise anything, but I'm certain that we may fairly certain that we may do a, another round of maybe a real quick survey to see if there's any interest from families and staff who want to join in on the fun. So but I, I'm not going to say for sure, but I, I'm hoping we have that much success that people want to, more people want to be involved.
Thank you. I think that is a very depends, that we keep the door open for the parents. Say, ah, my kids need to go. Then they know that we can extend the program to, who knows, who knows of what we can do together. But I am glad the educator, we think more or less just saying about kids, that is great. Finally, how many learning labs do we have?
Sergio, help out. How many learning labs do we have?
We have about six learning labs right now. We have a Post Oak, Garner, Patengale, Foster Community Center, Impression Five and Waldemar Nature Center.
And in a total of students going there?
Approximately 300 students.
Yeah, that is really something to know that we are doing already face-to, face-to-face instruction on things. There any, any chance to him to go from seven to 10?
There's always a possibility. It depends on what the, what the need is.
But we, we need to offer that to the parents. So they, they, they need to know that they can, if we open a a lab in, in Patengale, where the parents, maybe the whole area wants to send their kids there. And, and that will have in 300 plus, that is a great number of the students in the Lansing School District. But thank you very much for, for this presentation and, and it's a, it's a, it's a process. It's a improving process and I am sure they are going to be, and the parents need to know that, that we want to help the students the best we can. Thank you very much to all of you.
Dr. Rodriguez, Dr. Burrows.
Really quick. Mrs. Benavides, I, I was just hoping to make sure that we're saving those narratives because having 1,600 narratives of how people were making decisions from a community like the EL community is an amazing trove of data. So I just, and I don't know what the plans are for, for looking at that, but that's, that's an amazing bit of data that you have to dig into the needs of that particular community, which is always a challenge to get good information on. So I'm glad you guys are storing that and hope you consider ways to, to unpack that somehow.
Yes, thank you for that.
Thanks, Dr. Burrows. Mrs. Willis, go ahead.
Thank you. I had to move rooms. My child's having a meltdown, which I, all the more reason why I understand why. Coming up with a non-in-person or a non-remote option is very much necessary. So I, I have a question along those lines. So just, I hope that you guys understand where I'm coming from. I'm, I'm supportive of us getting kids opportunities to learn in person and be in person and to hear the, the need from our families to have opportunities. I just want to make sure that we are making it clear that we have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is the best that we can, given the fact that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And I just think back to April 13th or March 13th of 2020, when the governor said, hey, we're going to temporarily suspend in-person learning that we never imagined. And so I just want to, again, reiterate how much I appreciate you guys coming up with an opportunity. But I don't want us to rush into an in-person opportunity just for the sake of doing that and making sure that we haven't thought things through, or at least if we, if we don't know exactly how we're going to do it, that parents know that we are, are, are taking everything into account and are, are kind of just having to roll with it. So with all that said, my two questions are related to substitute teachers for the, for the, for the afternoon portion, for the hybrid portion, for the SOAR time, what's going to be our plan for if we have a need for substitute teachers? And then what are we going to do if, if there's an event where we have to close an in-person building due to an exposure?
Well, I can answer the second one fairly simple is that our COVID coordination team has set down some pretty good protocols about what needs to happen. So the first call goes to Sue, who calls the health department and then we'll follow up what we need to do. Go ahead, Dr. Chapman. You want to handle the first part of that question? I'll do the easy one. Go ahead.
In term, in terms of substitute teachers, we do have in the district what we refer to as our designated guest teachers. So we have a, you know, a cadre of teachers where we know if there's going to be an absence in advance that we would be able to make sure that that particular site or class is covered. Coupling that with interim measures, if you will, because we will have student support specialists and LEA assistants available in the interim, you know, LEA assistants available in the interim, you know, the plan is to make sure that the students do have adult authority or presence until we can get the class covered. Because we want to stay within our mitigation strategies, we definitely want to avoid having to mix or bring cohorts of students together. So that is, in all transparency, Ms. Willis, an area that we're still fleshing out. Ms. Corbin, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add from the HR side as it relates to making provision and assurance for substitute coverage?
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Right now, we work really close, closely with our school principals when we know of an absence or a long-term absence in advance. We have unfortunately had some feedback from our subs that do state that the reason they do select the Lansing School District currently is because we are 100% virtual. That has been a concern from us. We have actually spoken to others districts in the area that struggle to get substitute teachers when it's, when they have the face-to-face services for their students. So that is a concern, something that we're really going to be watching very closely. But as Dr. Chapman said, we will be utilizing other staff in the, in any way that we can. We have, we've had a lot of flexibility and we've had a lot of cooperation from our, all of our bargaining units to be able to kind of spread some of those responsibilities around.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And certainly your answers are, are fair and understood, given the circumstances. I do have questions for my colleagues. I would love to hear from our resident physician, Dr. Body, and one of our other parents on the board, Ms. Moore, just about their general feedbacks and feelings about this plan. And just, and just your experience and recommendations based on what we've been presented this evening.
Madam President, do I have the floor?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
All right, wonderful. That was an excellent presentation, but I do have questions. A lot of the questions were-
Let me unmute myself. Thanks, Rachel. So-
Dr. Body, let me, let me stop before- Dr. Body, Farhan, can you hear me? Farhan, can you hear me?
I don't know.
Mrs. Moore, go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Moore, can you just respond to Rachel's question? Because then I have Guillermo on my list before you in terms of asking questions.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Well, Rachel, your question was, how do I feel about the plan thus far? I do believe that there is, I would like to see more of the fleshing out complete before I can really say that I agree or I support the plan. I have a child in the school district and so I think it's important that all the, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted before I can really move forward on this. I did, well, Madam President, you're asking me to hold off on my question. Did I hear that correctly?
Mrs. Moore, go ahead and, and Mr. Lopez, I'll come to you next.
I appreciate that a great deal. So my question is, have we decided what schools that we were going to open? I didn't hear that in the presentation. Or are we still fleshing that out as well?
Really good question. We are looking, we are hopeful to open all schools, but it's going to depend on numbers. And you saw some of our numbers there that they don't match up to having a separate, a separate program going at a school that maybe only has 15 or 18 students in the whole school that want to be there. So the answer to your question is that we're probably going to be combining some, some locations. It's going to, once again, as we send out our letters, as we said in the PowerPoint, in the next seven to 10 days, we will find out who's actually going to be somewhere and then we can actually give you a better idea of what those numbers look like then.
Okay, that's, thank you for that. I do, like I said before, the, the plan I, I did like, but I do want to see more of what the other things that need to be covered as far as, you know, the co, the classroom or the cohort, what is that really going to look like? The, the plan, the, the, the actual plan from the different, like the COVID team. If there is a breakout, you know, what is that going to look like? I would hate for it to happen and we're then trying to come together and, and get things done. Because this is a serious matter. We all know that. So I hope that I was able to contribute and thanks again for your presentation.
Thanks, Mrs. Moore. I'm going to go to Mr. Lopez and then Dr. Body.
Madam Pres-, wait a minute, hold on. Oh, Madam President, I guess I'm on. If Dr. Body wants to answer Rachel's question, go ahead. I, I don't know.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Mr. Lopez. Farhan, go ahead.
Sorry about the mix-up earlier. So to answer Rachel's question first, first of all, I'm quite impressed with the plan that the team put together. So thank you. And I think that's what I dropped last time. My feedback is that we should basically honor the wishes of the teachers because what we don't want to do is take a bad situation with respect to COVID and make it worse. So as a physician, my bias is to try to prevent death. And, and so I fully recognize that this is a suboptimal situation. Our students aren't learning. But I also want to prevent bad outcomes, not just in our teachers and support staff, but also children. I mean, I work as a pediatric hospitalist at Sparrow on the weekends. It's my second job. And I've taken care of children at Sparrow hospitalized with COVID. So it does happen. And I've been in those rooms and talked to those families. So yes, it's not as common as adults getting it, but children are getting it. So I really, really appreciate the, the caution that, that our executive team has, has outlined. And that, yes, we want to do this and we want to help families, especially working families, but we want to do it in a way that's safe. So the overall tenor of the presentation and the overall theme of caution, I think that's the best approach to take. And so that would be how I answer, answer my colleague Rachel's question. And then for my own question, I will allow other people to ask. I'll get back in line and then I'll ask my own question.
Go, go ahead, Dr. Body, if you have.
Yep, go ahead.
I didn't want to cut over you, Guillermo.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
My, my question is simply to see if our executive team knows what other school districts that border us, how their plans might be similar or different to what we're implementing. If anybody knows, for example, what our neighbors to the immediate east or west are doing and how that might vary from what we're doing.
Well, go ahead, Elsa. You were going to start. I just cut you off there.
Thanks for the question, Dr. Body, and, and thanks for your support. We have taken a very close look at our neighboring districts. We, we have to be realistic and know that we are in a very unique situation based on the demographics of our student population, the communities in which they live and how they are provided for, and the list goes on. We have looked at, you know, as far west as what, what they're doing in Muskegon. And we've looked as far east as what's going on in the Detroit area. But when we look at that, we still have to come back to the me, the metrics of it all. But we have pulled in ideas as far as our mitigation strategies and others. And we have tailored those strategies and protocols and processes and programming to how it would be a best fit to the needs of our students and our staff. So I can't, I mean, if, if we want specifically what we've looked at, I don't have that information in detail this evening, but we did look even nationally and took a very close look at districts around the nation that are similar to us and what has not worked and what does work in, in various situations as it relates to COVID.
Thank you. No, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, because I, I personally don't know, like how, so for example, how Holt or Waverly or East Lansing is interpreting the same data that we have for the same county. That's sort of what my question was.
Well, the one, let, let me jump in there, Dr. Body. One of the things that's interesting about, you mentioned those three places. And for the most part, those are three places, the, the, what we have in common is that we, none of us have gone back to any kind of hybrid learning. Now, there's all plans for it and all that kind of stuff. I would, I would answer the question in what we've, what we've seen and what I've read. And not only with schools around us, but schools in Michigan, it kind of falls into a couple of categories for the most part. Either a school district is all in, face-to-face, straight through. But even that doesn't work in a place, one of our smaller districts in our county has gone face-to-face since the very beginning of the school year, but they still have 30 to 40% of their kids who are remote. So, because they gave kids, they gave choices. Most plans I've seen is split into half-day cohorts, pretty much, or, or two, or two full days a week. And then another core, two other days a week. Pretty much every one I've seen takes Wednesday off. Once in a while, you'll see somebody taking a Monday off or something like that. But it's pretty much to be able to clean, to do a deep clean in the building. And that's, that's pretty common. I know that I, I speak quite often with the interim superintendent in Grand Ledge and they're still working on their plan. They hope to be able to start up within a couple of weeks. So they have been also all remote until now. So I feel comfortable with our plan. It's a little bit different and, and then maybe what other places are doing, but I think it's going to work, what, it's going to work best for our kids.
Dr. Body.
No, no, thank you.
Mr. Lopez.
Okay, thank you. You know, I wanted to make note that when superintendent talks about staff either wanting or not wanting to, to be face-to-face or a hybrid mode, we're doing it in, in a very collegial way, you know? We're not saying you must. I mean, it's, we're trying to work in a friendly manner, you know, with our, with our staffs and with the personnel in all levels. But, you know, I, I guess, but Dr. Rodriguez asked about what if more families after seeing kids coming to, to class want to, to have their kids join? And, and then if, if we have situations that where we don't have enough teachers to come because they choose not to come, and then we may need to have subs to fill those positions. I mean, we, we're talking about expenses, you know, and, and all of this equals money, you know, everybody knows that. So the, the question is, what happens if there's a situation where we have more students than teachers? Or not enough teachers for the students who want to come in? And, and, and I know that Sam works with the, with the unions very well. But I think that in a way, you know, there would be a kids want to come to school, you know, some kids want to come to school. Some parents would like their kids to come to school, but they, they're more cautious and, and they would rather stay, you know, screen to screen. But I'm just saying that at the end of the day, when push comes to shove, we need to have a plan. And, and to, to, to have the adequate staff and, and keep in, you know, in mind the, the financial burden. Even though some of this extra cost may be covered by the CARES Act or COVID funding that we're receiving. But I just think we need to, to be mindful of that and, and have that in mind and have a plan to address those issues. And, but in the meantime, I, I want people to know that, that we're trying to work in, in, in the best of ways, you know, not forcing anything on anyone. But trying to make sure that our students get all that they need to be successful. And, you know, their success depends on teachers and, and other staff. So I, I know our superintendent is walking on a fine line there. And, and Elsa and the whole team are, are looking at that, I'm sure. So, but I wanted to make that point and people to understand that those are the things that we're doing. And that, that keep in mind, you know, we're, we're, we're not authoritarian, you know? It says, if something happens, you must come or you're out of a job, right? That's not the point. But, but it's the case that, that we're trying to work with everybody. And, and again, you know, our, our product will be the achievement of our students. And that is what I'm looking at as well. So thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to make that comment.
Mr. Lopez, Sam, I know you and I, I, I know we had a lot that we discussed, but I think this was one of the topics. We surveyed the staff before they began to receive their first dose of the vaccine. I, I imagine that there is a possibility that the feelings of some staff members may change after they go through that two-dose course of the vaccine and they see this plan and they see how deliberate the executive team has been in making sure that we have protocols for masking and, and taking temperatures and making, to Dr. Body's point, kind of as, as safe an environment as possible. So I'm, I'm hopeful that staff might reevaluate and Mr. Lopez, I think what you're trying to, what you're trying to say, what I'm, what I'm gleaning from your comments is we don't want to force anybody to come back into the buildings if they don't want to come. And I'm hopeful that when people get their second vaccine, which I know is happening imminently, and they see this plan, maybe they, maybe more staff members will choose to come in person. Mrs. Moore, I've seen your hand go up. Are you, do you have a question?
I do, Madam President. And I was trying to figure out how I'm going to word this. I want you all to know that I do totally, I appreciate the work that you put into the plan. Dr. Chapman, you delivered it wonderfully. I really appreciate that. I'm just, as a mother, you know, of a child in the school district, I just have concerns. That's it. Just concerns for all our students, actually. But I am a mom of a student in the school district. I want you to know that I, I do, I support your plan. I'm not saying that I don't, I don't appreciate the work that you've done. Because, I mean, you've fleshed it out. I just, I would like to know if next week or the following week when we, when we meet, will you be fleshing out or giving us more information about some of those things you are fleshing out to support the plan? Because I, because the 20 seconds will be here before we know it, if everything goes well.
I am certain that this will be, I'm sorry, I'll say something and then turn it over to you, Elsa. I am certain that we'll be coming at every board meeting and telling you where we're at. I can't imagine we won't. Dr. Chapman, go right ahead. I cut you off. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, you, you are definitely in charge, Superintendent, certainly. I follow your lead. I just, I just want to emphasize the, in the essence of time, the, the mitigation protocols, it is so detailed. So we pulled from that, Ms. Moore, just to kind of give an overview of what's embedded in the mitigation protocol. But for example, when you mentioned what, what will be the process or what will occur if there is an outbreak? Embedded within that protocol from Nurse Willer and her staff and the COVID team, it's very methodically detailed how that will take place. We just did not present it in full this evening, but it is embedded in there, so.
All right, so I can say thumbs up. Thank you, thank you, because I was a concerned mama over here.
Oh, I understand.
I have a daughter at Everett right now because she's cheering for the basketball game and I'm not there because I'm, so thank you for that. Thank you for bringing your plan.
You're welcome.
Dr. Burrows.
Could I just echo one to add on to Dr. Chapman? The COVID coordination team is made up of 11 pediatric nurses. And we strongly support Dr. Body's comments about our first goal is health and safety. So we have developed strategies, protocols, documents, procedures. It's making its way- Uh, it's making its way through the executive team now, and I think you will be feeling very reassured once you see that. But, uh, the nurses share your concern that our first goal is to keep all of our students safe. So, we, we're, we're working on that for you.
I, I just wanted to say really quickly that, that I look at these sorts of plans. I mean, yes, they're plans, but there is much frameworks for plans, because, because we don't have the time, um, as a group to go through every detail, and there's always a lot of minutia. So when we say approve a social studies curriculum, we're not, we're not, we're not reading every single element of it. Um, so I, I'm fully confident, um, that, that there's a lot of details that are going to have to be worked out based on how many teachers and, and students are going to be in the classrooms. But to just to understand that this is, this is the shell of a plan with some of the details filled in. But I, 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 I'm sure that as we go along, particularly if we have specific questions, the executive team will come to us and, and color in some more of those details. Now's all I have.
With that, can I have a motion?
Madam President?
Dr. Body.
I move that we approve the plan as presented.
It's been moved by Dr. Body, supported by Mrs. Lilge. Any further discussion? Like, please say no, because it's almost eight o'clock. Can we have more business? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
That, Ms. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilge?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, executive team. Looking forward to seeing it updated in a couple of weeks and looking forward to see what the media covers with this plan. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna just, um, move on. I, what, what I'll say to my board colleagues, if anybody needs a break, if you need to go get a drink or whatever, um, just turn your camera off and, and do what you need to do. And if somebody's camera's off, I will know that you are with us, but maybe needed to take a minute. I just don't want to stop our flow here. Uh, so we're going to move on and report from superintendent. Sam, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, oh, hey, I had to check to see if I was muted, and I wasn't. Wow. Uh, as you heard from, uh, once again, I want to, just, I can't say enough about, uh, Dr. Chapman and her presentation and the rest of the work that the executive team has done, the work that LSEA and LASSA has done along with us. And we, we have just started, you know, the real work begins, you know, so, uh, we'll be ready. Um, tonight, in a little while, we'll start our search for a new leader for our school district. This school board is well positioned to take on the awesome task of selecting a new leader. The board will also need your help through comments, surveys, let's talk, emails, and other communication. They need to know what you think. Our, we're going to continue our theme. If you recall it, our last Did You Know is we did, uh, former, uh, African-American employees of the school district. Tonight, we're going to concentrate on, for Black History Month, African-American graduates of our high schools. So I will start with, uh, oh, I started, oh, yeah, Mr. Keck.
Hello again. Did you know that Mr. Tim Cunningham was born and raised in Lansing and graduated from Everett High School? And then went on to Michigan State University in nineteen eighty on a football scholarship where he was a four-year starter for the, for the Spartans. Mr. Cunningham was faced with the choice between the football field or the musical stage. And lucky for the world, he chose music. Although a football scholarship saw him go through college, his passion for the saxophone has carried him well beyond, as he passed a career in the NFL to become a musician. Playing the saxophone professionally for many years, Mr. Cunningham has appeared in many jazz festivals around the country and the world. And for decades, the words of smooth, cool, and funky has been used to describe Mr. Cunningham's high energy and emotional stage shows. He has produced several albums and CDs, and his experiences bridges beyond the live stage to television. It's an honor to have Mr. Cunningham be a Viking.
You heard, did you hear that, Mrs. Willis, right?
I have three of my own.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Keck. Uh, Ms. Corbin.
Thank you. Good evening. Did you know Kevin Jackson, a fellow Quaker from the class of nineteen eighty-two, is a Class A state wrestling champion, a three-time NCAA wrestling All-American, team captain on an NCAA championship team, a gold medalist in the Pan American Games, a gold medalist in the World Championship, and went on to win the Olympic gold in nineteen ninety-two for freestyle wrestling. He was inducted to the Greater Lansing Area Sports Hall of Fame in nineteen ninety-three. Mr. Johnson went on to compete in UFC, winning UFC fourteen middleweight tournament. Jackson got into coaching, even coaching other Olympic champions. Currently, Mr. Jackson is the freestyle developmental coach with the USA Wrestling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbin. Great Quaker. Uh, let's see, Ms. Black.
Thank you. Did you know Dr. Brian Beverly is a long, lifelong Michigan resident and proud graduate of Lansing's J.W. Sexton High School? In his quiet voice, Beverly would tease others about how they too should have been a big red and advocate for quality education in public schools and passionate about providing similar impactful experiences with students in today's urban schools. He holds a PhD in educational policy from Michigan State University, is an alumni and co-coordinator of Michigan's Educational Policy Policy Fellowship Program, and is a former member of the Lansing's Lansing Board of Education. Dr. Beverly is currently the director of the Office of K-12 Outreach, where his work is centered on school turnaround efforts and instructional leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lang.
Good evening. Did you know Sadi Washington lettered in basketball and track all four years while at J.W. Sexton High School? Should have been a big red. And in nineteen ninety-three, we say, received all state honors in both sports. After graduating from Sexton, Sadi enrolled at Western Michigan University as one of the top basketball players for Western all four seasons and received all Mid-American Conference honors in two seasons, including first-team honors in nineteen ninety-eight. The ninety-eight season also included an upset win against Clemson in the NCAA tournament. Sadi graduated from Western while double majoring in business management, management and marketing. Sadi began coaching basketball as a volunteer at Romulus High School and then ten seasons as a assistant and associate head coach at Oakland University. In two thousand sixteen, he became an assistant coach at the University of Michigan and is currently one of the top recruiters in the country. The highlights of his career so far was coaching in the two thousand eighteen Final Four against fellow Sexton grad Drew Valentine, who was also an assistant coach at Loyola Chicago and being selected as interim head coach at Michigan for a few games during the two thousand eighteen-nineteen season. Good luck to Sadi Washington and his future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Ms. Benavides.
Good evening, everyone. Did you know one of our very own big reds was the first black fire chief of the Lansing Fire Department? That's right, Sam Hopkins, a Sexton graduate, was hired in nineteen sixty-five at Number One Fire Station, located at Chiwasi and Grand Avenue. He became fire chief in nineteen eighty-eight. Mr. Hopkins was also the first black lieutenant, engineer, and captain. He went on to become the first black fire chief of Ann Arbor in two thousand five. Sam was also a Hall of Fame inductee. What a trailblazer. Did you also know that our very own Lynette Hester is his niece? We can see that greatness runs in the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Diaz.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Did you know accomplished violinist Melissa White is a proud Lansing School District graduate? It all started with a young girl who was very persistent. This White shared that she first saw the violin when she was only four years old on an episode of Sesame Street. She was fascinated by the way the violinist's chin fit into the chin rest and thought, that looks like a perfect instrument for a person to play. And right after the show, she asked her mom for a violin. Mom didn't say yes, but she didn't say no. So four-year-old Melissa begged for two years, and finally, when she was six, her parents believed that she meant it. So she got a violin and began playing. From then on, it was serious business. Although neither of Ms. White's parents is a musician, her dad is actually a retired accountant for the state, and her mom, Regina Washington, is a retired school counselor from right here in the Lansing School District as well. But they both understood dedication. Melissa's career has included solo performances around the world, the formation of an enduring and successful chamber group, the Grammy Award-winning Harlem Quartet, and most recently, the creation with fellow violinist Elena Yarosty of a yoga program and retreat for you musicians called Intermission. We are proud to have violinist Melissa White as a Lansing School District graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Uh, Dr. Chat, Dr. Chapman.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. Did you know Dr. Alexa Kennedy was the first African-American woman in the United States to become a neurosurgeon? Dr. Kennedy delivered a compelling account of her life and accomplishments just a year ago as a special guest at her alma mater, J.W. Sexton High School, during a Black History Month celebration. She gripped the students' attention as well as mine by sharing both the challenges and successes of her journey. Upon graduating from J.W. Sexton High School, Dr. Kennedy pursued a Bachelor of Science degree in zoology at the University of Michigan, where she graduated in nineteen seventy-one. Her brilliance inspired further pursuits, which culminated in the accomplishment of graduating cum laude from the University of Michigan Medical School in nineteen seventy-five. That same year, she completed her first medical internship at Yale New Haven Hospital, which further validated her astute knowledge and skill. While working as a neurosurgeon at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-two, her fellow physicians voted her one of the top residents. In her work as a neurosurgeon, she saw young patients facing life-threatening illnesses and injuries. Through her twenty-year career in pediatric neurosurgery, Dr. Kennedy has helped thousands of patients, most of them aged ten or younger. Dr. Kennedy was chief of neurosurgery at the Children's Hospital of Michigan from nineteen eighty-seven until her retirement in June of two thousand one. She holds two honorary degrees, a Doctorate of Humane Letters from the University of Detroit Mercy, awarded in nineteen ninety-seven, and a Doctorate of Science Degree from the University of Southern Connecticut, awarded in nineteen ninety-nine. She received the Children's Hospital of Michigan's Teacher of the Year Award in nineteen eighty-four and was inducted into the Michigan Women's Hall of Fame in nineteen eighty-nine. In nineteen ninety-three, she received the American Medical Women's Association President's Award and in nineteen ninety-four, the Distinguished Service Award from Wayne State University Medical School. In two thousand two, the Detroit News named Dr. Alexa Kennedy Michigander of the Year. We salute you, Dr. Kennedy, and the, and appreciate the inspiration you share with our students by helping them dream big. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, executive team. I think, you know, and I want you to know, we, we celebrated Lansing graduates without mentioning maybe the most famous Lansing graduate. But, uh, since we're in business with him, we, we'll, we'll just announce Irvin Magic Johnson, a nineteen seventy-seven graduate of Everett High School. So, that concludes our report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know I said this last time, but you can continue to tell me these things for the rest of my life. I think it is so cool. Lynette, I got so excited for you. Like, does she know she's his niece? Oh, my God. It was really, I got really really hyped there. Um, thank you, executive team. Um, okay, moving on to routine matters and old business this evening, we will start with committee reports, facilities committee, Mr. Lopez.
Oh, I'm next.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, board facilities, I have no report. We have a meeting coming up tomorrow. And, um, then I will have a, a report at the next meeting.
Okay, how about promise committee, Mr. Lopez?
Promise. Um, I want to, uh, first acknowledge Terry Bernetto and, uh, Justin and all the volunteers that helped yesterday delivering meals to, um, to, um, Lansing students, uh, I think seniors um, who will, uh, set up, uh, a, a Zoom meeting with, with them. And, uh, again, you know, it's a meal delivered to them, to their home, and then they got into the, the meat of the program via Zoom. So, uh, thanks, Terry, and all the volunteers who, who helped, uh, make that, uh, make that come together. And yesterday was a pretty bad day to be driving around, but, uh, you know, things did happen, I, I, I think. And just to let, let you know of a couple of things that are happening, you know, this year, on March, um, Lansing Reed's presentation to RIF, um, Promise will be presenting, um, um, a check to RIF, uh, and that has to do with the, um, Lansing Reed's initiative, uh, that was started by one of the Promise Board, uh, members. Uh, on May twenty-first, on May, this May, uh, Promise pledge ceremonies for all sixth and seventh graders. So, I'll give you the, the exact date, but it's in May. On June, of course, we have the LSD graduation party. I will also, uh, send you those, um, uh, dates. And, um, and August twen, on, on, in August of twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, there's a Lansing Golf Classic, so, uh, to raise funds for Promise. So those are just, um, bullet points of things that are coming up, uh, through the promise. And, uh, I'll give you the exact dates in the next or later reports. That's what I have from Promise, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Equity Committee, Mrs. Willis.
Thank you. The Equity Committee has not met since the last board meeting. Um, I have reached out to West Ed to inform them that they have been selected as our firm of choice, and I'm coordinating with the superintendent and Mr. Lang to execute a contract. And once we have a contract to review and execute and know what our next steps are, I will be, um, back with further updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent agenda for this evening. Our consent agenda includes the approval of the February fourth, two thousand twenty-one regular board meeting minutes and February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one information study session minutes, uh, as well as the receipt and approval of the treasurer's report for January. May I have a motion?
Madam President? I move the, uh, consent agenda be approved as presented once we have our summary treasurer's report from Dr. Burrows.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Willis, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. I'm going to open it up for, uh, Dr. Burrows in a moment. I just want to point out an interesting thing that I noticed on the treasurer's report in one of the donations that came from the lovely mother of one of our board colleagues, Miss Lilge's mom made a donation to the district. So, thank you, Joyce. Um, Dr. Burrows, go ahead.
Stealing my thunder.
Sorry.
Um, it's okay.
Like, raggedy as president, I guess.
No, it is. Totally is. Um, so, uh, the treasurer's, uh, report is attached. Um, to give you a quick summary, um, if Kirk will let me. Uh, the beginning cash investment balance is twenty-three million. Receipts were sixteen million and disbursements fifteen. The ending general fund cash and investment balance at the end of January was twenty-six million dollars. Um, this is a cash investment balance at six million higher as compared to the same of last year. We had a, a really impressive number of donations to the district. Um, I'm going to name all of the donors and not all the purposes and amounts, or we'd be here a really long time. But the total was just shy of forty thousand dollars. So that was really, thank you so much, um, uh, communities for supporting the Lansing School District. Uh, our donors were the Carl McLean Memorial Fund, Joyce Bishop, uh, Marlee Williams, the Sherwood Foundation, Mid-Michigan Terrible Foundation, Dean Transportation, Brooks Sports. Dean Transportation, Brooks Sports, Fidelity Charitable, MAGNA, which not a group I'm familiar with, and the Heart of West Michigan United Way. So thank you all very much, Mrs. President. This concludes my treasurer's report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Dr. Burrows? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Body?
Yes.
Dr. Burrows?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodgins? Mrs. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mrs. Lilji?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to new business for this evening, I'm just going to hand it over to Jay Bennett, who is with the Michigan Association of School Boards. Jay, take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. We are here tonight to talk about who you would like to have come in and interview for your open superintendency. So I'd like to remind you of just a few things. We'll be talking about the candidates tonight as numbers only. We will do our best to shield the identity of our applicants in order to ensure their confidentiality. We're going to start with, you know, your top six that you would like to bring forth. I'm going to poll each of you. I will keep track. And then after I have polled each of you on your top six, we'll see where we are, and we'll go from there. Before we start with that process, any questions I can answer for you tonight?
Mrs. Willis?
Quick question. There's a candidate that has an out-of-state license. Can you tell us what the process is if there's a candidate that's licensed or certified for superintendency out of state?
If you hire anybody that has an out-of-state or does not have a current Michigan license as an administrator, you have to then register them with the Department of Education. You have to justify their hiring. So you have to justify why you hired a non-certified individual when you had most likely certified individuals that you could have hired instead. And for an out-of-state candidate, the justification would just be that you hired an out-of-state candidate. And then that candidate has to start the process of obtaining a Michigan certification within six months and finish that process within three years.
Okay.
So for some, it may be as simple as transferring a current administrative certificate from another state. For others, they may have to take some classes or take a program in order to get the requisite requirements. It's something that they'll have to work with MDE on. MDE will tell them exactly what they need to do in order to get their certification.
Okay, thank you. I just, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Sorry, Jay, I'm going to let you run the show.
That's all right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Oh, we have a candidate that was interviewed before. Is this candidate part of the seven, the six, or is it an extra one?
If you would like that candidate to be part of your six, that is fine. If any of the candidates that we have previously talked to, you'd like to include them in your list, that's fine. We decided that we were going to open this up completely because quite a few of the candidates that you were finalists last time have had either significant job changes or significant life changes. And as you've noticed, not all of them applied again. Some of them did. And so it's going to be up to you as a board as to whether you want to have them back or if you would like to move on to other candidates.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, so I know that the candidates were in alphabetical order, and the numbers were just kind of random. So the numbers don't mean anything. They make, they don't link to anything. They don't make any sense. They're not a ranking of any sort. They're just random numbers that I attach to the candidates for purposes of discussion. So when I call on you, if you could read them in their order alphabetically, so starting at the top and working way down towards the bottom, that would be helpful. And if not, then you're just going to have to give me a minute or two more to find my way. So I'm just going to start with the way that I have things on my screen here. So that means starting with Ms. Hodgins.
Can you just tell somebody else?
Okay, well, how about we move on to our newest trustee? Trustee Moore?
I knew you were going to call me. All righty, so you want my numbers, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. Number 62?
62. Okay.
83?
Okay.
Four?
Okay.
Nine?
Okay.
Seven? 25?
Okay, I'm going to read these back to you. Make sure I got them. 62, 83, four, nine, seven, 25.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Body?
Hey. One moment here. I'm pulling up my notepad.
Yep.
Okay. 22.
22?
Yep. Seven.
Seven?
50.
50?
And 69. Sorry, that was up.
That's okay. 69.
That's what I have.
Okay. Trustee Burrows?
One second. Four, nine, 22, 33.
All right, one second, please. I'm sorry. 22, and then?
22, 33, 50, and 70.
Okay, four, 22, nine, 70, 33, 50.
Yes.
Okay. President Lawrence?
45, 83, 69, 96, 22, 28.
Okay, 45, 83, 69, 96, 22, 28.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Lopez?
Okay, here we go. 45, 83, 87, 22, nine, and seven.
Okay, 45, 83, 87, 22, nine, seven.
Correct.
Okay. Mrs. Lilji?
Okay, I have 45, 83. I'm trying to put these in alpha order in my brain. 22, 7, 50, 28.
Okay, 45, 83, 22, 7, 50, and 28.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Rodriguez?
45, oh, one more. 45?
Okay.
Eighteen, 83, 69, 87, and nine.
Okay, 45, 83, 69, 87, and nine.
What's about 80? Oh, no, 80, no, I didn't say it. How many I gave you?
You gave me five.
Oh, then I had to give you another one, 22.
No, you said, you said 80.
He said 80.
Oh, did he say 80?
He said 45, 80, 83, 69, 87, nine.
Okay, got it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Okay, and Ms. Willis?
Um, let's see here. I'm not even going to try to bother to do them in alphabetical order. 62?
All right, 62.
69, 50, 60, two, and 33.
Okay, did you say two?
Two.
Oh, two. There we go. Okay. All right, so let me read these back to you. 62, 69, 33, 50, 60, and two.
You got it.
Okay. Give me one second here. Okay. So I have candidates 83 and 22, each garnering five. I have candidates 45, 69, nine, seven, 50, all garnering four. So that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 candidates. So based on that,
Jay, can you?
Yeah.
Beat the candidates that got four votes?
They got four? Yes. 45, 69, nine, seven, and 50.
Jay, could we interview all of them?
That was going to be my recommendation. And since we came down to seven, and we have seven that have five and four votes, my recommendation would be that we interview all seven. And if in the off chance that one candidate or two candidates decline interviews, then that still gives you, you know, five or six to interview. If more than two decline, we can have a discussion. But based on what I'm seeing here, I don't think that that's going to be an issue. I think you're probably going to get all seven of these, at least six out of seven of these for interviews. So seeing that you have a pretty clear seven here that you would like to bring forth, and let me just take a quick look here, because I didn't actually look at who we ended up with.
Can we pause for one second so I can take a breath and look at the list?
And that's what I'm going to do as well, so absolutely.
Because that was lightning fast. I have my own spreadsheet here I'm working with.
Yep, no problem. I'm going to do the same.
So just to make sure I have the list that I have correct, because I was writing it down for myself while you were speaking. The numbers I have by votes are 83, 22, 69, 50, 45, nine, and seven. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So I will reach out to each of these seven and establish their interest in entering for the job. I will then start working on getting them scheduled over the two dates that we've agreed upon, March 2nd and 3rd. As soon as I have confirmation that they'll accept interviews, I'll let you know in a press release that you can then release. Once I have the interview scheduled, I will then give you another press release that you can release showing the scheduled times. Once I get the scheduled times, I will work with Lynette to assign Zoom licenses for those specific appointments and make sure that those are posted appropriately as open meetings. Any questions about, you know, any questions or comments about any of the candidates that we've selected to move forward? Any comments about the interview process or the dates that we've selected? Are we all good? What's on your minds? I know it's been a long meeting for you so far, so. And we can talk about some of this on Saturday as well, now that we've established these are who we want to call back. But I just want to make sure that I can address any questions you may have tonight that you don't want to wait for Saturday.
I want to make sure my colleagues know that the plan for Saturday is to finalize interview questions. And really, if you remember a year ago, the retreat that we had with our union leadership, we will be having a similar conversation like qualities that we are looking for in a superintendent. So just so people kind of know what the plan is for Saturday.
Madam President?
Mr. Lopez?
Can I have the list, the numbers repeated again?
Sure.
In alpha order, 45, 83, 69, 22, nine, seven, 50.
50, okay. Okay, seven. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for me tonight?
Is there any guidance that we received in the past that you had for how we made a decision or how not to select someone that you didn't raise here? Because I know there was a lot of preparatory discussion about how to make decisions and what are some important considerations before you invite someone for an interview?
Yeah, so, you know, we wanted to make sure that the candidates met the selection criteria that you had set. And I believe that the candidates that you were working off of, you know, four-year interviews met that selection criteria, at least met a majority of the selection criteria that you were looking for. In the mix here, you have, you know, you have some candidates that have administrative experience. You have some candidates that have superintendency experience. You have candidates that have experience working in districts similar to Lansing, you know, urban districts, you know, larger districts. And so I think that you've got some, you know, some solid candidates here based on your selection criteria. You will notice that there were some candidates that we did not talk about that may have met some of your selection criteria. But I'm sure you probably figured out quite quickly, as I did, that they were not necessarily the types of candidates that you were looking to bring forth. I think that, I think the ones that you chose were all excellent picks, and I look forward to seeing how they do in the interviews.
Madam President?
Mr. Lopez?
Uh, Jay, so the background checks, when do they take place? At what point?
So we can do, for any of our Michigan-based educators, so any of them that are currently working in a Michigan school, you know, the background check is not something that is as important because they have to by law report anything that they, you know, any laws that they break, they have to report because they're, you know, they're they're currently employed and and misconduct checks are done by their employers on a yearly basis and all that kind of stuff. The out-of-state candidates, we can either, we can, I can commence in doing background checks on all seven of the candidates immediately. And we can have those results relatively quickly, depending on the level of background check that we want. I can tell you that the pandemic has caused some delays in the responses for some of the background checks only because, you know, the offices with a lot of people working from home, if they have to go to the courtroom to pull, you know, background and pull documents and records and whatnot, it can be a little, it can delay the process a little bit just because not everything is electronic.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, that was surprisingly short and sweet, everybody.
Shockingly.
Thank you, everybody, for coming prepared tonight. Thank you, everybody, for participating and having, you know, clearly done your, your homework and read over all the application materials. And as soon as I hear back from the candidates, I'm going to log out of the meeting here, start making some phone calls right now. And as soon as I hear back from the candidates, I will let you know and hopefully I'll have everyone, I'll know everybody by tomorrow, Saturday, at the latest. I'm hoping as soon as they can get back ahold of me. So thank you very much, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your meeting and I will see you Saturday morning.
Jay, one more quick thing. If you could, for the, after you've been in touch with the candidates and they've accepted an interview, could you package together their application materials and send them to me? Because I know we've had some media requests for that stuff already.
Yeah, I'll send you redacted resumes on the seven applicants, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
See you Saturday.
Yep, see you Saturday. Have a good night, everybody.
You too. Okay, guys, moving right along. Report from Secretary and announcement, Doc.
Thank you, Madam President. Sunday, February 21st, 2021, Lansing School Distributable Showcase. Join us this Sunday, February 21st, from noon to 4:00 PM. We look forward to seeing you at www.lanslsdshowcase2021.com. For more details, please visit the Lansing School District website. Wednesday, February 24, 2021, New School Professional Development Day. Wednesday, February 24, Virtual Parent University Suicide Prevention and Intervention from 5:30 to 6:30. See Lansing School District website for Zoom link and more details. Thursday, March 4, 2021, regular virtual board meeting, 6:00 PM. Be a Zoom, see Lansing School District website for Zoom link. And you know, we have this Saturday also at 9 o'clock, we have board meeting. Wednesday, March 10, 2021, Kindergarten Registration. Do you know the little kids? Bring them to the Lansing School District. Wednesday, March 10, 2021, Parents University. If we go to counseling, what will my friends think? 5:30 PM to 6:30 PM. See Lansing School District website for Zoom link and more details. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Doc. Mrs. Lilji?
Thank you. I just didn't see it on, on the secretary's schedule, but I want to make sure I have it right. March 2nd and 3rd will be finalist interviews, first round?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Burrows?
Thank you. So ready for my statement?
Yep.
Okay. I prepared this statement based on a lot of things I've been seeing and hearing. And this is no reflection on the plan that we have recently supported quite the opposite. It's a fact of life that sometimes all of your choices are bad ones. And unfortunately, this is one of those times. On the one hand, we have a pandemic which is still functionally, even with a vaccine, essentially out of control, which makes it simply reckless to rush to have in-person instruction. On the other hand, remote learning, we know, is extremely bad for children. The last year has seen too many overworked educators, too many overstressed parents, and too many struggling students. The losses for working mothers and for disadvantaged students in particular has been incalculable. So we on the school board have had a choice to put our educators and students at risk to either their physical health or their emotional and educational health. Now to me, and I think to my colleagues, the answer has been straightforward because I would much rather a year of lost educational progress than being dead. Now I recognize that there's a big price to be paid in making that choice. We're just in one of those situations where you have to choose the least bad outcome. It's something else entirely when you just pretend that the costs are all on one side. Because that is what I'm hearing from too many in government and the press that put the blame on teachers for schools being closed when they claim that teachers are unwilling to take the same risks that other workers have had to take, risks that no one should have to take. For some people, a certain percentage of dead teachers are just acceptable losses. Well, I'm sorry, but teachers didn't sign up for that. It's a hard enough job as it is. The real question is this. How many dead teachers is enough to reopen schools? For me, the answer is zero. I'm happy for teachers and staff to make their own choices about the level of risk. I'm proud that we're doing this. But I will never require any teacher to return in person until they're ready. And there's plenty of evidence that parents agree. National polls show that parents are reluctant to return to in-person learning until teachers are vaccinated. Now, I've been in public life a long time and I'm not surprised at sloppy journalism that misrepresents the research and public opinion. And I am used to politicians taking the easy way out. I am also disappointed that ISD Superintendent has decided to editorialize on something that's not his responsibility. We don't work for you, sir. But I am scandalized at the CDC's recent guidelines. Last week, they exaggerated the findings of a study that says in-person instruction is safe based on an affluent rural community. And this week, they watered down the requirements of safety when it comes to ventilation and social distancing and community infection rates. Saying we should open the window to get enough air in is just not good enough. Do you know what they explicitly de-emphasized? Vaccinating teachers. These guidelines are a political document prioritizing reopening schools while pretending we can just wish away the risk to teachers and students. It's designed to shift the burden onto schools and away from national leadership. I can't say I'm surprised it's what they've been doing for decades. The Lansing schools are going to reopen when and how it is safe to do so and when educators and parents are ready and not before. And no amount of magical thinking or political pressure is going to convince me otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burrows. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, thank you very much. I visited one of the federal credit unions this week and I saw so many good pictures from students from different districts around us, Waverly, Ochimoes, Lansing, Waverly. And also I saw thirteen pictures from students, 11th grade, from Everett High School. And they were really brilliant. Work, artwork from our students. Then I was so happy to see Lansing School District in these shows. I was thinking, for many years, we did leave. And when we did leave, we raised money for art and music and, and we had many, many pictures from the Lansing School District students from kindergarten to 12th grade. And sometimes some of the teachers donate their arts. Then I was thinking how we can promote a game, art productions and our students. Maybe in May, if the weather permits us to do it, we can have a museum in downtown Lansing with the art from our students. Everybody can see what our students do. Maybe we can sell them if they let us do it and they, we raised money from art and dedicate this money for our teachers. At the same time, we can bring the, the music. We can be the choir. We will have a show in downtown and other places two or three days during the last week in, in May. But I was so pleased to see thirteen different pictures from the 11th graders and, and from Everett High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Dr. Burrow, Dr. Boddy?
Thank you, Madam President. David Hockaday, happy birthday.
Thanks, Dr. Boddy. Any other remarks from board members this evening? Okay, everyone, thank you so much for your time and attention this evening. I know it was a long one. At 8:40, we are adjourned.